Box is seven P M.
Yes, sir. And I believe we have everyone here. Good evening. I'd like to open the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. First thing will be a roll call vote. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hein.
Here.
Commissioner Hi. Commissioner Hi, he's muted. I'll come back to him.
Oh, there he is.
Oh.
We see you, we just don't hear you.
Oh, now he's unmuted.
Well, he's here.
Okay, here. Commissioner Hall.
Here. Here.
Commissioner Montgomery.
Present.
Commissioner Short.
Here.
Commissioner Niles.
Here.
And Commissioner Eschke.
Here.
Thank you. We've got three agenda items this evening. The first is the approval of the minutes from the October twentieth meeting. Second is a public hearing for from the staff for minor code amendments. And after after we do the approval of the minutes from the October twentieth meeting. Robert Mall is going to give some additional details regarding agenda item number two. And then third is going to be a flood hazard regulations update from Lauren Hollenbeck. So first, agenda item is the approval of the minutes from the October twentieth, two thousand and twenty planning commission meeting. So commissioners, if you would review that, please, and I would welcome motions to edit or approve.
Mister Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the planning commission meeting on Tuesday, October twentieth, two thousand and twenty.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hall to approve the minutes from the October twentieth, two thousand and twenty planning commission meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Eschke. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Hein.
Yes.
Commissioner Hi. I think you're still muted.
Perhaps you could just give a thumbs up.
Yeah, can you give a thumbs up? Okay, perfect.
Yes.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, now we can hear you. Okay. Commissioner Hall.
Excellent. Yes.
There Montgomery.
Yes.
Commissioner Short.
Yes.
Commissioner Niles.
Yes.
And Commissioner Eschke.
Yes.
Thank you. The minutes from the October twentieth, twenty twenty meeting are approved as written. Second agenda item is a public hearing for staff minor code amendments, M C twenty dash zero one. And I would like, Robert, at this point in time, if you would please provide comments in terms of, we're going to do a change of pace in terms of this particular meeting agenda, planning commissioners, given a conversation that Robert and I had earlier today, and some good recommendations that Robert has regarding multiple issues within this one agenda item. So, Robert, all yours.
Thank you, Chair. So, as you know, because of COVID, it it puts a number of our work plan items sort of on the back burner. And when we were able to start moving forward with a lot of the the long range planning efforts with North Shore shorelines and so forth that Sarah has been working on for the last eighteen plus months, we really needed to get that moving through the the system. That said, we needed to start moving our other projects that have been backburnered through some of the is mandated updates to the code from the state regarding some definitions and housing issues. There's fire code requests from the Fire Marshal's Office, and then a host of other code items that we typically do on an annual basis, just as we navigate through using those those codes. But it became clear after talking through some of these things that it's just a very big package and it 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 would almost benefit, I think, the the community, public and the planning commission to be able to parse out some of these elements into separate items, if you will, separate staff reports and hearing items. So our recommendation is that we table this public hearing item for now. Staff will return with everything that we're we were going to discuss tonight. We'll return at future meetings, some of which will be in December. And it will be noticed accordingly for what items they are, and then there'll just be separate staff reports and hearing items on those individually. So nothing is going to be ignored or forgotten that we have on the agenda for this evening. It's just, we felt it better than to have to try to you know, parse it out on the fly this evening. It would be more efficient for everybody if we we just took the second approach. So if anybody has any questions or concerns about that, be happy to answer any anything on that, but that's staff's recommendation.
So, so, Robert, given that, and thank you for that, I I do think it will help us. It it slows a few things down, but I but to your point, I think it provides more of a comprehensive opportunity to integrate some some ideas that are going to come from the North Shore development, as well as the housing survey in in some of these major issues. With that being tabled, is there anything in terms of of minor code and some of the minor code amendments recommended this evening that you want discussed this evening, or do you want to wait and present that at a future meeting? I just want to make sure I understand her.
I think it would just make it easier for staff and the planning commission because it's all consolidated now, so to try to parse it out now, and the way it was pub the public notice went out and the fact what was on the on the website, you know, the expectation, it's sort of all of it. So the 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 minor code amendment stuff, it's not really time sensitive. Some of the additions from the mandates of the state are things that we need to address. But again, we we have the, you know, if we felt it critical to continue moving on tonight, we would just hold the public hearing and and move on that way. But we do have a comfort level which is recommending that, oh, let's just table it and staff will return with different packaging, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Is in the materials that we reviewed this evening, is there anything or what is particularly time sensitive that that needs to have our eye or specifically mandated by the state legislation? And I think you included three state acts included in this that that we have to respond to, correct? Is there anything that we're out of that we need to pay attention to particularly, or or are required to to address that we're behind on?
I'll refer to Sarah Fox. She she had brought this issue before the planning commission last year when the legislation first came through. I believe we also gave an update to city council. And then we just, again, just finally revisited this last planning commission meeting now that we've been wanting to move forward with the other items that weren't related to the phase one of the North Shore visioning and the individual comprehensive plan requests that we had. Sarah, I don't know if there's an actual timeframe, but I'll let you respond since you know this pretty well.
Sure, yeah, with the mandated updates, some of them are are just definition in nature, as we know, and I think that the timing crunch would be if someone actually wanted to make an application on any of those items, if they wanted to come in and and do some sort of assisted living center or something, and our code is out of date currently. So that could be an issue. We don't have anything that we're aware of right now. But that would be the reason why, you know, when mandates come down, you know, when a state law is passed, that it's a good idea to get them updated in our code, just in case, you know, an applicant wants to make come forward and propose a project and points out to us that we're we're out of step, right? So but we're not aware of any pressing projects at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions that you have regarding this? All right. Thank you. So what we will do then is skip agenda item number two, the public hearing for where for staff minor code amendments.
And just a point point of clarity, is it the intent to just postpone this until next month and bring it back? Have staff bring it back to, after properly citing it back on, giving public notice, or would another way to do this would be to actually take a vote to table the matter. And I don't I don't know if you have any more insight on that and how you wanted to do that, Tim?
We certainly can. We can certainly take a vote to, or I would entertain a motion to table it and separate the two issues and and have them be one, the minor code amendments as one agenda item, and then you know, table the other items as separated that are more part of of comprehensive planning. We could do that, certainly, or we can just bring them up at the next meeting. I I don't think that these are two topics that will be included in the same meeting, given the nature of the content, as well as the timing. I'm going to defer to Robert on that. I think we can address minor code amendments in the meeting to follow. I don't see more of the long term use issues coming to fruition or being discussed until we have, or I see those being included in a discussion with North Shore and results of the housing survey. But I'm going to refer or defer to you on that.
Yeah, thank you. I actually think it would be best just to formally table it, and then we'll return at a later date. Whether we do some of it at the next meeting or all the next meter, parse some of it out in the next year's discussion, I do want us to be able to talk through that a little bit logistically, since a lot of this was unfolding this afternoon. So David, I don't know if that gives you any comfort on that.
That that does. So what I think the best way is somebody would need to make a motion, it'd require a second, and then there'd be a vote on it. And basically, to lay on the table means to temporarily suspend further consideration action on a pending question. And then we may bring it up for consideration at a later date. We just have to remember to do that.
Yeah, so Chair, I would make a motion that we would formally table agenda item number two, public hearing for staff minor code amendments until future meetings, so that staff can have time to separate those out.
I have a motion from Commissioner Niles to table the agenda item number two until staff has the opportunity to separate out the two issues, but address both at a future meeting. Do I have a second to that?
No, I'll second that, Chair.
I have a second. Commissioner Montgomery, they have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hein.
Yes.
Commissioner Hi. Or thumbs up works. Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Commissioner Montgomery.
Yes.
Commissioner Short.
Yes.
Commissioner Niles.
Yes.
And Commissioner Eschke.
Yes.
The motion is approved, and we will address that agenda item number two, public hearing for staff minor code amendments and the separation of the two topics at a meeting, upcoming meeting. I do want to thank staff, as well as planning commissioners, for all the preparation that was required to go through all the materials for this evening, knowing that we will revisit them, but in two separate agendas. Move to agenda item number three, flood hazard regulations update, M C twenty dash zero four, presenter Laura Hollenbeck. Lauren Hollenbeck, sorry, Lauren.
It's close, it's all. I'm going to share my screen. Does that have a few slides? Hang on just a second. Can you guys see that?
I see it, Lauren.
You do? Okay.
Yeah.
Great. All right, good evening. Lauren Hollenbeck, Senior Planner. So tonight is a workshop discussion on proposed amendments to Canvas Municipal Code Chapter sixteen point fifty seven, our frequently flooded areas, and to the environmental definitions in Canvas Municipal Code Section eighteen point oh three point oh five oh. In your packets, tonight, and there's a few items. One is the staff report that describes those proposed amendments. Also, are red lines that show the proposed changes to those two chapters. Also, in there, you'll find the Washington State Model Ordinance for these, the flood regulation updates. And then you'll also see at the end of your packet, a new flood improvement permit application template form that will be implemented. All right, let's get started. So why are we updating the background on this? So since nineteen eighty one, the city has been a participant in the National Flood Insurance Program. And the program enables property owners of participating communities, such as the city of Camas, to obtain flood insurance. And in fact, there are currently sixty one flood insurance policies within the city. And so for the city of Camas to maintain participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, the city's flood hazard regulations must be in compliance with the FEMA Model Ordinance for Washington State, which incorporates tho those NFIP National Flood Insurance Program standards. Earlier this year, staff had a, what they call a community assistance visit with the Department of Ecology, Flood Plane Department staff that that implements these requirements. And they sat down with staff, and it consisted of planning and the building official. And they went through and reviewed our flood ordinance and identified identified some mandatory code changes that needed in order for us to maintain compliance with the NFIP. And to, before we dive into going through what those changes are, I just wanted to go through a couple quick terminology with you all, which I think is kind of some good background to have, and I think it's a little helpful as you're going through and you're reading through some of these changes. So I have a couple of different graphics here, and they actually kind of sort of represent the same thing. It's what we're looking at is our frequently flooded areas. And frequently flooded areas, basically everything that's encompassed in in this this graphic, the water body, the floodway, flood fringe, and one hundred year flood plain. This floodway, so this this means that the channel of a river or water course, including the immediately adjacent lands, that that's essentially your definition of your floodway. In this area must be reserved in order to discharge the base flood without cumulatively cumulatively increasing the water surface elevation, which I'll get to that in a second. Again, I'm just trying to do a broad brush brush overview here. And then your flood plain. I don't know if you guys can see my arrow. Here we go. This means any land susceptible of being inundated by water from any flood source. So in this graphic, you look at it, it's essentially the floodway plus the flood fringe areas. That equals your one hundred year flood plain. And then wondered here, when they say that, that's one one percent chance of a flood occurring in any given year. That's how it's defined. And the graphic on the right, I put this one in here because it had the base flood elevation and and that'll come up a little bit in the code updates, but with that is essentially is the water surface elevation. So this this is the elevation where the floodwater is that is anticipated to rise during that one hundred year flood. So here, I don't know if any of you have seen this. This is one of our, this is just a snapshot of one of our flood insurance rate maps. It's a snapshot of one of the panels. I just honed in on an area in the city of Camas. And basically, it just shows in, you know, our citizens where where the areas are, you know, if they want to know if their property is going to be inundated by possible flooding, this this firm map identifies those areas susceptible to flooding. The hatching on here, that is your floodway, as we talked about in the last that last slide. And then the blue is the flood plain areas. And the orange, you'll see there's some spots at orange. Those that they actually call those the five hundred, five hundred year flood plain. And that's a lesser chance of of getting flooded, so at least likely chance. The zone A E on here. These are your your, basically on the map and the legend, it says this is where the base flood elevations are determined. So you'll have a piece of property that will have an elevation number on there. That would that would be their base flood elevation. So it could be a number like the elevations four twenty two, for example. That's, you typically can figure those out when you when you go look into the flood insurance studies to determine what those numbers are, but and then the zone X is an area of moderate to minimum risk to flooding. And the next slide, I just want to show this one to you really quick, another snapshot. This is zone A. And we do have a zone A. This is in an area, this is the only area that that I'm aware of, and I'm pretty sure, and I ran this by Bob too, and he he concurred with me that we have in the city, which is right next to the Mill ditch. And the zone areas are areas without determined base flood elevations is is how those are defined. So I'm going to stop sharing this slide. And I'm going to go to the regulations here. Just one second. Had a lot of those. Can you guys see this?
Yes, Lauren.
Okay. All right, so really quick to get kicked off then. So when you looked at the proposed amendments in the packet, you'll there there were, the changes were shown in red, and then on the side, there was a comment box that on each section identified the whether the proposed amendment was mandatory or recommended by FEMA. And it also, in that box, identifies the applicable CFR and section of where and the Washington Model Ordinance. So you were able to kind of go back and see where you can find that mandatory language and requirement. See here. So I'm going to go ahead and pull up just the definitions. And I'm not going to go through every definition. But I do want to explain that all of these are mandatory definitions, and you'll see I, this is what we used to have in here before I struck that out. That means that we're removing that and replacing it with this definition required by the FEMA mandate. I don't know if you had any discussion on any of the definitions at this point.
Is there anything in particular on the definitions that you want to call out for explanation, Lauren?
No, not unless there was something you had questions about. But I could try and answer. If there is none, I can move on to the updates of Chapter sixteen fifty seven.
Maybe I have one question. Is changing this definition has any impact to the actual requirements? I don't see changes. It's just naming and definition changes so far. I'm more curious to know if those changes affects other sections.
Oh, so you mean the new additional definitions?
That's right. For example, I see area potential flood hazard is the same as before, is one percent or greater chance of flooding. So that says, even though the name is a little bit different, but it does not really change the actual impact.
Correct.
Is there any of them that are new or have different impact now?
Any of the new? No, not that I that I saw in here.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the definitions? Okay. Start at the top here. Okay, so the first section, they, one of the mandatory changes that they wanted us to put in here is in this red here to include language that adopts by reference the flood insurance study. And also wanting us to put in the specific address or location of where a citizen can go and find a copy of the actual flood insurance rate map and study. They wanted to see that. And so we added that here. As Bob, Bob, our billing official, has administered a lot of the flood hazard regulations and elevation certificates. So this is where documents are housed.
Question, can we also include the web website address if we haven't? I don't see it.
We can certainly do that. It's, that's not a mandatory requirement from FEMA, but if if you feel that.
It would be easier, I guess, for users, not all, but most users these days to check online rather than coming to downtown and check on hard copy.
Yeah. We can, we could certainly add that.
I think it's a nice idea, especially now with with limited hours and access and interaction a to commissioners' recommendation that it would be nice to be able to reference that yourself, that, you know, as a citizen, to be able to see that.
So we're going to be, oh, hey, Phil, I was just going to say, we're going to be updating our our website overall. And that's, those are some elements that we're going to want to be, we want to have access or accessibility for all of our codes, documents, adopted plans, firm maps, things like that. So and then I I know that the administration is well underway with getting a communications director on there to help with this dissemination of information. So, sorry, Phil.
No, and that's fine. And that was going to be my recommendation is that we we put a link in our website adjacent regarding flood plains that that directs some directly to the site. I I I wouldn't recommend putting other jurisdictions' websites in our code because we don't control when those change. And so I think the website would be a more appropriate way to go.
Okay. Good comments. Okay, so the next section, this is a recommended section, and this is on, they wanted, you know, there's proposed language for compliance that all development within special flood hazard areas is subject to the terms of this ordinance and other applicable regulations. Staff looked at this, didn't have any heartburn on it, but again, this is a recommendation from FEMA. There's any comment on that one or not?
Would you please explain what that regulations are? I remember there should not be any development within flood, hundred year flood plain, if that that's mandated.
That's correct. And that's correct. And we'll get to that section. That the, all the flood plane development regulations are in this. That the, all the floodplain development regulations are in this section of code. This next section, penalties for non-compliance. So this is a mandatory section and I want to explain this one a little bit. And everything that you see there in red text is mandatory except. For what is in bold. And the strikeout language. Is a proposal from staff because. We felt like there wasn't a need to specify. The fine amounts or the days of imprisonment. In our code, but rather state. Shall be subject to the enforcement provisions of the Camus Municipal Code Sections. One 18.55.400 to 1855.460. Those sections of code. Take you to our civil regulatory order section and civil fines. So it's just linking them to a different section of, of the code and we. Staff did run this by. The city attorney. And he kind of gave, he gave that one a thumbs up. Does that, does that make sense?
I, I could appreciate why, why you made that change or made that recommendation. Any, any questions or concerns commissioners?
Okay. We're getting there. Next section. Okay.
Lauren, this is very helpful to go through it like this.
Okay.
I, I find.
I hope I'm not going too slow. Alright, performance standards. So this is a mandatory section. And what they are, this is something that came out of our community assistance visit. They were asking us. About our development permit applications and. We don't have any. And so this is something that they're, and, and this is what comes in that template that I put in your packets. And that flood development permit encompasses what this section is asking for. A lot of it's asking, I mean, in here it talks about. An elevation of the lowest floor, including the basement. For structures that had an elevation certificate, those would be those structures. Typically their residential structures would have been elevated. And then it's also asking on that same flood development form. You know, if a commercial, non-residential structure comes in, typically those ones are floodproofed. And they have a different certificate. I did talk to Bob about this one. It was interesting. He said. He doesn't, he, I think he mentioned maybe he had one, two. Of his whole time at Camus where he had to do a floodproofing certificate, certificate. So. I thought that was kind of interesting, but anyway, this is what, this is. The information. That they are asking for. Is to have a flood development permit. Application. For any develop, for development in the floodplain, special flood hazard areas. And then with that. The next. Section is that they're, they're. Want you to put in a designation of the floodplain administrator. And we've put in, staff put in community development director or designate. Is hereby appointed to administer, implement and enforce this ordinance. We, we didn't think it would be, well, we didn't name a staff person in there. We just thought we'd leave it at that.
Well, we've, we've done that with SEEP administrator and. Shoreline administrator and so forth. The idea is that it falls under the community development director, community development department, but. As designated, designated, you know, because currently Bob Cunningham is the building official is the. Administrator, but perhaps it, it might change to a different individual who has the expertise in that field. So. We, we just wanted to have that flexibility as we have staff changes, as long as it's under a specified department director.
And then with that, they. Mandatory requirements include listing the duties of the floodplain administrator, which they would be doing, reviewing all of those development permits. Those floodplain development permits. This next section.
Any, Lauren, I have one question for you. Is there, are there? Or what's the specific expertise or training that the floodplain administrator needs to have if they're responsible for, for reviewing the application?
Well, that's a really great question. If you look at the flood improvement permit. One of the things that they, the floodplain administrator is required to do is. Determine what the base flood elevation, if a development comes in. What that means is that they would go to the flood insurance study. Based on where the, the development is proposed on that piece of property, you take the firm and the flood insurance study. And that person would figure out what the, the base flood elevation is, and they would write that. Down on the application form and making sure that the form is filled out. Correctly. And making sure that, that all, all the information is, is in there essentially. And signing off on it.
And to add, add to that, it, it's, it's like most other. Elements of, of some of the, the. Code interpretation and development review that staff goes through, there's training opportunities from FEMA. And just experience in using that, that particular. Set of codes. You know, for, for an example, I had to get. Up to speed on shorelines quite a bit and transitioning my career over to. City of Canvas, because we didn't really have any shorelines in battleground. So it's just a matter of then. You know, research, education and training, training is something that we do support with staff consistently. So it's not like. Needed to be a civil engineer and certified PE, for instance.
No, I mean, it could be, it could be your, your planner. It's for example, in the, in my last city I worked in, they, I was the, the city floodplain administrator. Even though I, though I was a planner and I got into training, I went to, they sent me to Emmitsburg, Maryland and you get, you get, you just get trained on how to become a floodplain administrator and what to be looking for. When you're issuing these permits. And how to issue them. And those, and those trainings are free.
So I, I have a question. How do we make sure that flood map is updated? Most of the time they're very old and. They don't get updated unless city staff ask for updates. The topography can change during the course of time and. Some grading can happen in the past 10, 20 years.
You're, you're absolutely right. They, they FEMA does not update. Their maps regularly. Though they'll come through and do a big holistic update. I don't know when the last one was here. Bob probably would know, was it?
I think it was later than that. I think it was around 2015.
15, okay.
And like some of the other elements that we look at, say, for instance. Topography or topo maps or wetland maps that we have available from Clark County GIS. The firm maps are a lot more accurate than those others, but. Nonetheless, if it's project specific and the applicant may have a disagreement with what the, the firm map might show, then. They'll need to get surveys out there and verify elevations and so forth and provide that, that information. So they have to. Advocate.
Yeah. And this is a good segue into the section that's coming up because we talk about CLOMARS. Conditional letter of map revision. And that's where an applicant, if they want to change their, they think their base, base flood elevation is different or their, even their flood boundary is different. They have to do a, have an engineering analysis prepared and they submit it to FEMA and FEMA is the one that issues those letters. So you're not necessarily changing the firm maps. But you have a letter from them, they FEMA is acknowledging that yes. That we agree with you. That your base flood elevation should be something different or the boundary line should be something different. So that's usually an approval through them, but there's necessarily like automatically change the maps because. I'm not sure they have the funding and to do it, you know. On an annual basis.
Thank you. Last question for now. If a property, if it happens, floodway goes from the middle of a property. And developer wants to change the channelization route, do we allow that or not? Let's say instead of middle of their property, they change the floodway to go from side of their property.
Well, you mean like grading?
Grading, yeah, technically grading.
They probably shouldn't be doing that.
Alright, sorry. I, I was not sure if it's addressed in our code.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to respond to that. I, I believe that it's going to be in the context of, of the reasons why. What the purpose of doing so would be, because there's certain, there's certain development activities that are not allowed in floodways and floodplains. However, for instance, certain road projects may be permissible. So if it's in the context of having to adjust. A floodway as part of a necessary roadway project, it may be permissible. In terms of a new land division. I'll, I'll go with for now, likely not and, and probably absolutely not. So it's really in the context of what the development activity is for.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions so far? Okay, so this next section, information to be obtained and maintained. Again, this is where if. Somebody was, wanted to do a residential construction and they want, then they lift, they elevated their building. One foot above the BFE and they had to get an elevation certificate. Those types of certificates. Or if they're gonna, if there's any kind of variance action. Or substantial damage calculations, all of that is what we would. This section is, is saying for us to keep. On file here at the city, which I know for the elevation certificates, that is something that we keep with the building permit files already. And this section, this is, this is the one I was kind of touching on a little bit about the CLOMAR. Changes a special flood hazard area. This section is recommended. Staff reviewed it and didn't see. An issue with including it in here. And this is just basically telling again, the applicant, if they were going to try and alter their BFE or boundaries, that they need to submit a lowmar. That has to go to FEMA for approval. And then, and then they have to submit that letter with their building permit application. And then we keep it on file here. I'm sure FEMA keeps a file of it too. That section, that section's recommended. So they, so the section, this language is mandatory. They wanted us to add to ensure that proposed structure is reasonably safe from flooding. Okay. So this is under the floodproofing, non-residential. Construction section. Okay, so this one is more of, so if an applicant was coming in. And they were going to floodproof, this is more of just a heads up to the, the applicant or to let them know. That, that, hey, your, your first floor, if it is in fact below that BFE. Your flood insurance premiums. May essentially be higher because. The, if your, if your first floor is below the flood levels, your flood insurance premiums start to increase substantially. So that's more of just. And this is a mandatory section. So this is more of a heads up for the applicant. To let them know. That there's a potential that they're, that, that their flood insurance premiums could be higher. As opposed to elevating, if you elevated it, then your flood insurance premiums would be reduced. There's some language in here in anchoring. I don't know why I don't have the CFR here, but this is a mandatory requirement. This red language here. For anchoring. Next section is recommended. Stating storage of, you know, of storage or processing of materials that could be interest to human. Animal or plant life. If released due to damage from flooding is prohibited in special flood hazard areas. But only it would be allowed if it can be firmly anchored. That's what this next section is saying. And not substantially damaged from floods. Okay, performance standards for residential. So now here we're getting into the AE and A zones that I touched on. This is mandatory language to add in, in AE zones or other A zoned areas where the BFE has been determined. Or can be reasonably obtained. And, oh, and. That, and the rest of this goes on to say that the residential units. Shall have that lowest floor, including the basement, one foot above the BFE. And now they, also that includes all mechanical equipment utilities. Should also be elevated above the BFE or it can be waterproofed. Those are mandatory sections. This one talks about the unnumbered A zones for which a BFE is not available, which again is, you know, we've got the Mill ditch. And this again is under residential. So I don't know where, you know, we may, I haven't looked at it closely on the firm maps of whether or not there's actually residential. Construction potential in those areas, but this is saying if there is. No BFE that can be obtained, then there's, then the requirement is they have to have that lowest floor at least two feet above highest adjacent grade. This one here, fully enclosed areas below the lowest floor. That are subject to flooding are prohibited. And then it goes on to say, or. Shall be designed to. Automatically equalize hydrostatic flood forces. To allow the entry and exit of floodwaters. So in other words, having some kind of flood vents in there. And then adding. If you have an attached garage to a residential structure. if you have an attached garage to a residential structure constructed with the garage floor slab below the BFE, then again, you have to make sure you've got some type of flood vents or something that can let the water enter and exit the structure. Non-residential construction. Shall, they're just saying meet, shall meet the following. And again, it's that same language up in the residential construction section they added. Again, the same language for non-residential. Utilities, this is mandatory, water well should be located on high ground that is not in the floodway. Okay, this one I need to explain a little bit because I, I had some, a little bit of back and forth with the ecology staff on this one. So if um, and this goes back to a question I heard earlier about subdivisions. Um. So our code right now right here um says no lot or portion of lot after the effective date of this ordinance ordinance codified in this title shall be established within the boundaries of a frequently flooded area. So when I received this mandatory language here, which is all in red, it says where subdivision proposals and other proposed developments contain greater than fifty lots or five acres, whichever is the lesser base foot elevation data shall be included as part of the application. Well, we don't allow for subdivisions already. So I just heard from them today, this afternoon before this meeting, so I need to clean up this language. So they said um, we can take out the language, removing uh this that addresses subdivision proposals, but we are required to still keep other developments that contain greater than five acres. And I shouldn't have struck the, out the five, that should stay in there. Um, and other, and so I went back and said, what do you mean other proposed developments? Because this is all under subdivisions. And they said this would be for um non-residential or commercial development. So this language would read just how it's written with the strike throughs, except for the five acres shouldn't have been struck through. So it'll read where other proposed developments contain greater than five acres um base foot elevation data shall be included as part of the application.
And then on sentence two there right below it, Lauren, what is, what's the definition of frequently?
That was, and that, the graphic that I showed you that include, that's all encompassing. So that's your hundred year floodplain, your floodway, it's your frequently flooded area.
Okay, so included in frequent is a hundred year data.
A hundred year floodplain or flood, floodplain, however you want to term it. I think in our new definition says floodplain.
Okay.
Does that make, does that kind of clear? I'll have that, that cleaned up when when we come back for the next meeting, but. I know this is exciting stuff.
It, really quickly, Lauren, while there's just a quick pause, I did go to the FEMA website and, and their the updates to their FEMA map panels occurred in two thousand twelve and two thousand eighteen. It looks like for the entirety of Canvas. So those were the two days that they were last updated. I will also add that there were some LOMAs that um have been done. So those are the map amendments by um individual developers. Um, there, there is a, a, a few of them that were done down um in the area of Canvas Meadows Golf Course on the Parklands Development Site. There's a, a few that were done on that. So that, that's some additional information for you.
Thank you. That's helpful. And this last um section here, this is recommended language that they, they wanted to put in here. And this further explains variants, variances from flood elevations or variances from other requirements, requirements in this flood ordinance. They're basically stating, they want the, you know, whoever's applying for, for a permit to, or for a variance to know that these are quite rare. They're only granted for parcels with unusual physical land characteristics and only when the requirements of this ordinance would create an exceptional hardship. So there, it, it seems to me this language is something that they really are trying to emphasize um to make sure that, that the public knows that they might not be super easy to get, I guess, approval from FEMA, so. And that, again, that section is recommended addition. And so um I guess, you know, I, if there's any further discussion, um uh, we're looking at staffs looking at um hopefully taking this to a public hearing at your next um planning commission meeting or next month.
So Lauren, the
So Lauren, what, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I wish I now.
No, I was just going to ask for clarification on the section. I think it was probably page six or seven. Storage of potentially dangerous materials. Um, the way that you presented it on the second part of that recommended language. You said, but they could store it if it was anchored down, but I think the wording actually said other materials. So I'm wondering, I think it's just confusing to me on what the actual meaning is, the way you presented it.
Oh, okay.
Different.
It should be how it's written. I'm sorry if I misspoke, but it should be how it's written here.
So basically no storage of potentially dangerous materials. And the other ones, basically other materials could be stored if it wasn't.
Yeah, yeah, storage of other material or equipment may be allowed if not subject to damage by floods. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, perfect.
Sorry about that.
No, no worries. I just wanted to clarify.
Clarifying.
Any other questions or recommendations for Lauren? Uh, because as, as what you said previously, um, changes um or updates are going to be provided to us um for the next planning commission meetings, so for December twenty second. And at that point in time, this will be an agenda item for, for open public comment. Um, so that we could provide final recommendations and for that, a final recommendation for this code to city council. So that, that'll be our takeaway and update for the next meeting.
Yes. Well, thank you.
I have one question for Robert. The downtown library got flooded. Uh, was it because it's on the floodway uh area or s- stormwater facility is not working?
That's, it's the latter. Unfortunately, in the downtown area, we just have very old pipes um and conveyance systems that need to be updated. And it wasn't just the library. There were some businesses affected and um, and it was uh in, in addition to clogged drains, it was sort of a combination of factors. I don't know if you have any additional information on that, Phil?
Um, yes, a little bit. I, I don't have the technical analysis behind it, but my understanding is the, is in a half hour period, we had equivalent of rainfall that would occur under a five hundred year event. So it was something that was much more significant. It was a very rapid downpour in a very um uh defined period of time. And it was too much for the system essentially. Um, so our systems are designed to certain standards. Um, the amount that came down and the rate that came down was way above um existing standards. And then in our downtown, we have um older drainage systems that um are even pre, you know, more current standards, so.
Makes sense. Sure. Thank you. Well, that's actually good because those can be fixable. If the, if the, if part of downtown our library, library was uh at the floodway, it was really, it was harder to fix it. But knowing that this is about a structures not functioning, it's always easier to get it fixed.
Yes. And remember that your floodway are those areas that are right next to the water course too. That land area, like I showed on the graphic. Any other questions? Question? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. That was a lot of work.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, Lauren.
I'll stop my share here.
It's all right. Um, any miscellaneous updates? That's, this is our miscellaneous updates is our final agenda item for this, for the evening. Um, any updates that you have, Robert, Phil, David, anybody?
I'll, I'll just do a quick summary in terms of this year was, there is nothing um everything, I guess, about this year was unique and different. Um, and it continues to be that way. It's ever changing, every, almost every day. Um, there's new governor's orders just out, you know, a couple of days ago that are affecting, uh, we're working um as closely as we possibly can with our local businesses, restaurants and other things. Uh, there, but we even locally don't have the power to uh do anything different than the governor's orders. Um, um, and so COVID has hit us just like everybody else. Um, it's, it's hit us at the city as well. Um, and we're, we're looking after employees. That's why all of our planners are working um from home and working remotely. That's why we're zoom, doing the Zoom meetings. Um, so I, I just, I'm thankful for all of you to, for your cooperation, uh, trying to learn how to use Zoom. We know this is not the the best format. We believe that in-person meetings, um especially with the public and, and allowing for public participation. There's nothing that beats in-person meetings and allowing public testimony through that venue. Uh, but this is what we can do and this is what we, we have to do at this time. So thank you guys for your patience this year. I'm hoping that next year is going to be a, a lot different. I know, I also noted that um, it is a, it affected our ability to bring things to you, you know, and so we had months. Uh, we had months on end where, where we weren't doing things. And I think that even um manifests itself in what's been coming to you more recently, where staff is trying to take a year's worth of work and try to get it moving through and find ways to, to move things through. Um, and it's, so it's imperfect. Um, uh, we want to bring you good product. We want, we want to, you know, uh, I think hopefully next year is going to be a little bit of a reset. So we'll all have the opportunity to uh, look on ways to improve things. And even the longer we've worked through this process, the more things will, will keep refining and improving under the current state. So um, just a big thank you. Um, I hope you guys have a wonderful Thanksgiving um and holiday as well.
Yeah.
Thanks, Joe.
Can't, I won't add anything beyond that. That was good, so.
Well, I like this, I think the staff has done a fantastic job under the circumstances. Um, and
Thank you.
Has a lot of, get the best of them. And I feel like I'm coming up the curve. I don't know, I don't have a comparison, but I'm learning quite a bit just sitting in, so I appreciate that. And I appreciate.
Yeah, the other one I'll say is, you know, any of these um talk to our staff, right? If you know the subject matter and you see something coming up and you have questions on it, uh, call, call our staff up. We, all of us are engaged. Um, and we'll get the right person that, you know, looking at it and, and, and helping, even if it's not something that's on an agenda. It's just something where you're here about development going on in the community and want to find out more about it. Do that. We, we love to, um, we want to help you guys grow an understanding of what we do, how we do it and why we do. You know, so just, please, just reach out anytime. Uh, all these guys, everyone of, everyone in our planning department or in fact, our whole community development department would love to um chat with you. And I think you probably have seen some of that already, but I hope that that's the case.
Thank you.
I do have to say, I've worked with uh Portland and, and other cities and Canvas is a joy. You guys are awesome.
Yeah, it's been great experience. I even know a short time being planning commissioner. Uh, it's been a great experience. So you guys always available to explain more and help us to understand uh what's coming and uh what you are proposing. Uh, thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to thank everybody for their preparation this evening because there was a lot of, a lot of material. And I also want to thank uh, the staff for their flexibility in uh some of the changes that were proposed uh and that you, you know, last minute. Um, that, that flexibility is appreciated. Anything else? Robert, do you have anything?
Well, we're, we'll have a very busy uh planning commission meeting in December uh as our uh holiday gift to you, so. It'll be good. We're, 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 we're looking forward to getting a lot of these things uh finalized, wrapped up and um uh, I can uh concur with Phil that, you know, our staff has worked real hard on from behind the scenes. Logistical challenges, techno- technological challenges, you know, and just the patience of working through. So we appreciate your support and guidance and um, yeah, since it's been, it's been a very productive few months and we are going to have a very busy twenty twenty one, so. Um, uh, and that's a positive thing. So, thank you.
All right. Well, with that, with that preparatory announcement, Robert, um, of, of what we have to look forward to.
Yeah, Madeline, I'm going to be busy on December twenty second. I don't know why yet. Is the meeting going to be on the twenty second or the fifteenth?
And luckily it's on the fifteenth, so.
Very good. But it's not on our agenda for December twenty second.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, actually, I think it is.
The third Tuesday is the fifteenth. Yes.
What is the fifteenth? Yeah.
That was my bad. I counted the wrong Tuesdays.
I'll be talking to you right after this meeting then. Now I'm just.
The air went in the proper direction.
Yeah, that's right. All right, have, have a good evening and postpone the meeting.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank, do I, I will officially close the meeting and uh the next planning commission meeting is now officially on Tuesday, December fifteenth. Thanks everyone. Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.